I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independence School District to order. Let the record show that a core of the board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 5, 5.1. At this time, we need a motion to certify the agenda. Motion made by Robert.
Second.
Seconded by Linda. All four. One, two, three, four, five. And let the record show that LeAnn Ramsey and Scott Newsom are not present at this time. I'll lead us in a prayer. Lord, thank you for the good opening that we've had today, and thank you, God, for air conditioning. Pray for those, Lord, that are having to work out in this heat, Lord. Just protect those and watch over our kids. Help us to have a good meet the teacher and meet the tiger and kind of a greeting tonight, Lord. Help us to be a blessing to many and be with our teachers if they come back. And, Lord, if this four-day week is what you'd have for us, Lord, just help it to thrive. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance and worship of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Right, there's some action items here. Looks like there's no public forum. Item six A, consider approval of the 2023-2024 Student Code of Conduct. That's why it's going to present that.
Okay. Hi. So, we utilize the TASB released Student Code of Conduct template from Policy Services. And so, always after a legislative session, we have updates, pretty big updates, based on bills that have passed. The largest change in Student Code of Conduct this year was based on House Bill 114, which has now made vaping a DAP placement. So, any student who is caught using, possessing, selling a vape, it's a mandatory placement. What we have as a school district is local discretion on the time of placement. So, we have no workaround out of that. So, that will be a pretty large shift for parents, and so I think that is...
First-time offense?
First-time offense. Straight.
What was our... So, I guess that trumps our policy, obviously.
That does trump our policy. Our policy, we did parent... We would do a parent, like suspected use. We did a parent conference. We would do one-day ISS if they were using, maybe three-day ISS. We did not have students hitting DAP till they were repeat offenders that were failing to provide a vape, but they had a vape on person and a person was found. And so, now it's straight to DAP. So, now, the one caveat in that, because DAP, and what I've told Dr. McCullough, DAP has a strict 15:1 ratio per DAP certified teacher. So, that means with Mr. Tidwell, if we're at capacity 15:1, we either have to tag in another certified level, which means they have to be certified in secondary, in some secondary subject, PEEC 12 qualifies. So, if I tag in a coach as a secondary DAP teacher, then we just have to watch our ratios. Now, what 114 is allowing us to do is if we have a student sitting in DAP for a vape offense, and we have a student that has a harsher offense that would warrant DAP placement, we can bump that student to an ISS placement only if we are at capacity. So, that is the one little loophole is we can move them to ISS, and that is only if... Only if we are at capacity or we're struggling to get that second certified person in.
So, when we have a level of like we had for ISS, will we have that with...
For DAP, yes. So, we will do the same thing. Our secondary administrative team, so that is middle school principal, assistant principals, high school principal, assistant principals are looking at our current vape, kind of what we consider our vape infractions, to go, okay, what does that first offense look like? I mean, that can be as simple as one day in DAP, two days in DAP. Then they go to five days in DAP. So, we are going to stagger it like that so that we have that. But I do think this will be a, probably one that you're going to hear about, because I got a lot of calls on vaping from parents that were, they don't think it's a big deal. They, you know, they're getting their brother or older brother or sister's vape. We did not have that big of an issue in elementary. We did have some elementary students bringing a pod, like they got out of a sibling's room or a parent's room because they thought it was cool. But it would trigger, there's no age restriction. So, it would qualify for elementary as well as secondary. So, it's a little weird. There's no how they've written this law. The other thing that is interesting about 114, whereas before, if you were caught with marijuana, THC, or we can still, anything in the felony level, it was a straight expulsion. They've now taken that out. So, if you're caught with marijuana, THC onsite or within 300 feet of school property, that is now a DAP placement as opposed to an expulsion. Now, that doesn't mean on Max's side that there's not the legal course that they'll take that then will go down that law enforcement channel. But as a school district, it's, they've lessened that charge with marijuana and THC to mandatory DAP placement versus mandatory expulsion. So, that's another one that will go. But I do think, because we are seeing such an epidemic with students using vape pens, and what they classify as an e-cigarette, which is anything that has a vapor, you'll see that in code, it's called e-cigarette, we call them vapes. And we get them as young as fifth grade all the way up. I mean, we had fifth and sixth graders vaping this past year. Mostly six, mostly just a handful, it's not like every sixth grader. But I do want you to be ready if you get that. We have talked about having that when students return both campuses as their little welcome back. When they do their grade level meetings, they're hitting that pretty heavy. So, we've kind of talked about that, releasing something as a district letter, just notifying parents of this change in legislation. Again, not us, that's, this is a law that has changed or a legislative bill that has taken place on that. So, just wanted you to be informed of that. The other change coming in, hold on, I've got my notes, excuse me just a minute. That was the big one, I wanted you to be aware of. The other one that came into play is there's a change on harassment. They have changed the definition of harassment, which this could potentially meet some of our students, because a student who's making a telephone call and intentionally failing to hang up or disengage, a student who is calling from an anonymous device, a disposable device, so a kid that goes and buys a phone and repeatedly calls, repeatedly calls, repeatedly calls another student, they're classifying that as harassment. We will have to use it to that same level. So, they have definitely increased the severity of what they classify as harassment. Bullying and cyberbullying do also fall under that harassment piece. So, that was really, for me, the two major changes that I met with administrative staff on and that I felt would potentially be questions that you have as a school board. So, definitely, I wanted you to be aware of those. But those were the only changes, other than they changed where it says the code. Now, it says Code of Conduct, or it says Campus Behavior Coordinator. They changed it to say CBC. So, those were just little wording changes on that template are the most big hitters.
Good to know.
So, that is all on that one. Do you have other questions on the Code of Conduct? Did you have it down? Make sure I have any notes for your guys on that. If you do not...
Surely, you won't get phone calls if our parents have problems with kids following the rules.
Not at all.
We should be good and proud.
Not at all. Okay, so I just need to have Sean out, and I am done with that one.
I'll take a motion that we consider the approval of the 2023-2024 Student Code of Conduct. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I see you.
Seconded by Kyle. Any further discussion? I'll say distraction.
I think about the policies and stuff, the ear buzz, is that part of this that's new or not? Is that red?
That's going to be more student handbook and not Student Code of Conduct, yeah.
I notice there probably will be lots of calls on that one.
So, kind of right quick, tell us the difference in the student handbook and the Student Code of Conduct.
So, the Student Code of Conduct is what we consider the teeth and disciplinary action. So, we have either law, administrative code, education code, mandatory code that places us to follow. And it also is what I call the disciplinary bible. So, it kind of gives the legal descriptions, what we as a school district have to follow in that, and then we may break down to then the campus level to decide, okay, here's what that offense looks like. Kind of like we were trying to do with vape. So, we set up as a district, here's what our vape ramifications are. So, that's kind of what I call the meat of that. The student handbook is kind of taking board policy, all things that they think parents know, parents' rights, students' rights, and they take and make it into a very clear-cut, what I call user-friendly wording. So, it's kind of an overview of all of their rights as parents, things that they have to know in the state of Texas for students to go into public education schools, and it gives it to you in a generalized format. So, we also use the template for that. So, the only thing that goes in there is like our official attendance times, here's who our campus behavior coordinators are.
A little more local discretion in the student handbooks that you don't have in the Code of Conduct.
And it's really more of an, I call it your informative book. So, that's why it doesn't require board approval. Whereas your Code of Conduct, which we follow the state Code of Conduct. So, that's why there's not a lot of change. We don't get in here and really fine tune the wording. We keep it pretty generalized so that we have local decision on areas that we have local decision. So, as soon as you put it in there and find print, then you're kind of locked in. So, we try to keep it open to mitigating factors. So, because once you stick it in there, if you have Johnny, who we don't hear anything from, Jimmy, who we hear from a lot, you lock in, and now you're locked in, doesn't matter who it is. So, we really utilize that mitigating factors to go, how many times have they been in the office? What is their prior disciplinary history? What is, are they receiving services for anything that we need to do about? So, that gives us that local decision. So, the handbook is just really what I call a universal. A parent wants to know what's our policy on when we take attendance? How many excused absences can you have? How do you run your parent note? What do you do if your child has a temperature? That goes in the student handbook. So, that's kind of what, just an information booklet for them. The Code of Conduct is, by law, here's what we have to do in these type of situations. Here's what a club is classified as. Here, we have to have mandatory DAP placement if you're vaping. So, that's what I always say the difference is, which requires you as a board to say, this is what we do in these cases.
I'm just making sure I didn't fall in the same category, which is only good for you.
Get a question?
Yep.
It's kind of like they...
Real long street folks.
They didn't holler at us last year when they took out the holes in the knees and jeans. They just... Yeah, I didn't get to vote on that, so. Said they kicked me out of that. Okay, motion made by Aaron. Seconded by Kyle. Any further discussion? All four. I think he was five of them. Next item is a, consider approval of revisions to the FFAC local board policy.
Okay, and you have in forebook the actual policy change. So, you should see that if you open that attachment, if you have it with you, it's in red. What we are doing is we are updating this policy to allow us to use unassigned epi pens. So, if a student is going into anaphylactic shock and they, because as you know, students that have epi pens, they're in their backpacks, they may be in their purse, they may keep them in the nurse's office. And so, the state allows us to have what's called an unassigned epi pen policy that allows us, with trained staff, that has been trained onsite, to administer that. You actually have epi pen stations that if you needed to, if a student is having a reaction, that you can actually go grab what they call an unassigned epi pen, meaning it's not prescribed to a specific person, and administer that. So, that is the change that we're requesting here tonight or today. Tracy Decker was scheduled to provide that training. We've had to reschedule that training. So, although you will be approving this policy, we will not enact this policy until that staff is trained. So, once we have that staff trained, those epi pens will go up. And again, that will only be trained staff that utilizes that. So, Robert Taylor won't walk in the building and go, Kyle is freaking out. Grab the epi pen and jab him with it. So, there is a protocol for how that will work, although that would be fun. But it would be really, really fun.
That's what I was thinking, where will they be to, or they'll be like...
Similar to the AED machines.
Like the AEDs, that's exactly what they'll be, like the AED machines, and they will be...
But you'll have to bust it or something to get to it, so the students don't correct.
Yes, they won't be able to just rob one out. Kind of like the great analogy with the sixth grader, yeah, like they have to run through the hall and whack people with it, yes. But again, similar to our, you know, having Narcan onsite, it's just, again, when you have individuals that have that severe allergic reaction, then it's matter. And if we're talking about trying to find an epi pen in a backpack two hallways away versus a student who's having a reaction, or we can grab something to potentially save a life. Not that I'm aware of, I've not, I've not had that. I think it's a bit, just more of a safety measure.
Here's how some of these things come about, is it's happened somewhere around the state.
Right.
And you get a group of people who become very supportive, active in regard to their... Do they press, do they press their local representative, senator, legislator, whichever?
Exactly.
And it's one of those things that kind of people like to say, you know, this makes sense, so I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
You know, so.
So, I guess the state's paying for the pills, I guess.
No, that would be a negative. But I will tell you, Tracy Decker is amazing about getting donations, calling our local medical professionals, and that's how we got her Narcan pens. And there are some organizations that do provide those, and she's very good about knocking doors and making phone calls to get that. Because she has a whole stack of like boxes and things that she got to kind of get ready if we move toward with this, that were just donated to her, not the epi pens, but the storage cases so that she's had in case we move with this. So, she and I had had a lot of conversations in the spring. This is something that she feels very passionate about, again, safety for her kids.
Thank you for experiencing. Just a hundred and something bucks.
Yeah.
Those pins on it?
Yeah, they are.
Maybe more than that, they're pretty stout, too.
And they do have a shelf swap, no different, our AEDs are the same way, AED batteries. Part of the policy that, and she will be listed as our epi pen coordinator, which she is now even as our district nurse. But you'll have to do a rotation, they expire, no different than other prescription medication.
Which, well, those things will be okay if they expire eventually.
Yeah.
Right, maybe they didn't have to use them.
Right, right, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, any other questions?
All right, so I'll take a motion that we approve the revisions to FFAC local board policy according to the epi pen.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Josh. Seconded by Robert. Any further questions? All four. Five oh.
Thank you.
C, consider an approved vendor to install fencing at the elementary.
I want to go ahead and get this on here today as well, so we can start moving forward with this. I shared back with you back in the spring, we were recipient of a state grant, a safety grant, that all schools received. Ours was at the $200,000 level. That time when we received, we started getting bids that focused more up here on the high school and the middle school of increasing safety opportunities here. But then, our community was kind enough to pass a bond that's going to help us to address that in the construction phase. So, with that, with the school safety standards, what we've now done is we went back and looked at the elementary that was not being touched in regard to the bond, and we're going to use some of that money, grant money at the elementary. And so, part of what that's going to be is we were looking at pieces that we needed to upgrade. One was the fencing around the playground. And so, as well as on the back part of the elementary, there is one section that actually comes out from the library that is an open place. And so, what we did was got bids to replace the fencing around the playground in there to really kind of fortify, if we want to use that word, kind of make safer the elementary. And so, with that, we received several bids. The bid that I want to present for your approval was from Anderson Fence and Custom Welding. We've talked with them, and they're willing to work with us on Fridays and Saturdays, since we're out on Fridays, again, since we're at the point of school starting, by the time we're able to start this. But they're a few weeks out and are sharing that they'll be able to do that while we're not in school and work around our school time. So, again, that's grant-funded money, so it's not coming out of local budget, and that'll be a piece of the safety improvement at the elementary.
Where is Anderson from?
They are out of Will's Point. They have done several other schools and come with good references.
Okay.
Actually, well, we talked to them, and they've got material on hand, worse than most of them did not. It is a total bid of $47,290.
So, will they be working during the week?
On Friday to Saturdays. Limited, again, I'm not going, so I can't say they will not be here in it all, but that's the schedule, we're going to work with them on to be a weekend, because what I don't want to have to do is put temporary fencing up inside where they're and they're having to work while kids are there. So, the majority of the work, if not all of the work, will be done outside of school time. But we're working with them.
Is it, you may have already said this, let me catch it. Is it going around all the elementary or just like where the playground is?
It's going to be the playgrounds, and it will fence in the back part that you would enter into the library. That's the only other open spot. The rest of the elementary is secure. There's another open part to that, so that will secure you to fencing or the building itself, the elementary.
It's like a metal fence.
It's a wrought iron fence, non-sculable metal wrought iron fence.
Do you still see through it?
Mm-hmm.
Just probably, just a little bit different than what we have, I guess.
What we have there right now is chain link.
Chain link, yeah.
So, wrought iron would be a safe fence.
We may get that done in a weekend. It's a groove.
So, okay.
Think parents are still going to be concerned with like, say, being able to shoot through a wrought iron fence? Do you think parents would rather solid fence?
It's a good question.
I guess you could shoot through a solid fence.
Could, so the standard, so the standard that TA shared with us was a, was non-sculable six-foot.
I don't think parents are as concerned about being as available as they are being to shoot their kids.
Sure.
I think it's what they're more concerned about.
We really didn't have that part of the conversation?
But I mean, that's something, I mean, if that is something that's important to the board, we could definitely back it and read, read it, quote, or look at some different options.
I think we should look at an option for...
For a solid fence?
A solid fence.
Okay, so, take no action on this then?
But then when you put it around where?
So, that's another good question, because again, even in regard to fencing, we, what, as I said, this was elementary did, this was not replacing the fence here towards here. It was focused on the elementary first, because again, with construction, we'll see what happens with the rest of it. We are construction. So, that would be a part of that conversation as well. I can go back and, wouldn't go back and give quotes of what it would look like if it's going to be a solid fence.
Solid, all three. Four, actually, that one, that one.
Yeah.
Four playgrounds.
Yeah. Would you like for us to do? Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Solid, non-sculable, whatever. Have them do that, solid, high enough to can't let it scale.
We absolutely can do that, yeah, sure can.
All right. Mr. President, you agree with that?
Yeah. Just thinking about what your direction ought to be, you know, because if we do that, you still want to, if we're going to go to that route, you know, you might want it. Just thinking, you can still shoot through solid stuff, even though you can't see through anything, your kids are out there.
So, let me, thank you for kind of making more clarification. In regard to the type of fence for us, as you're saying it, my mind is, where my mind goes is going to be the posts and the braces are going to be wrought iron or metal, but it could be solid wood on the solid piece. You understand what I'm saying?
Be wood or our panel like they did in front of the bleachers on this.
Yeah, I mean, they're just, yeah, different metal, different materials.
So, we can look at some options, we can look some different options of what that solid fencing could look like. And it could be, I don't know, anything, and it could be very much like what we have. What's the type of fence that goes around like baseball fields, softball fields? What is that? Oh, I wonder if it starts with a A, I wonder if it starts with a...
Farm.
What is it? Um, it's not hurricane, that's not...
It's solid, long.
Yes, it's, is it hurricane? Hurricane fences, what is the, what is it?
And it's not as corrugated, but it is where it goes in and out.
Yeah, a little bit. We'll, we'll, we'll get some, we'll get some options, and I'll get those for you, I sure will. Okay, thank you for bringing it up. Again, that's not a, a solid fence was not even something we considered, so, through the standards they gave us. But thank you for bringing that up. We'll do so. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Let me get this straight real quick.
I think you just take no action.
Yeah.
Just take no action.
Because if we're not going to come back in this meeting with it...
Yeah. Just manage to show technical action, ask superintendent to get further information, bring out a future, future board meeting.
We can postpone it, or we could just take no action. So, let's just take no action.
Okay.
Move on to I D, consider approved vendor to install safety film for the district.
Okay, another piece of that school safety requirement is safety film on entrance doors, side windows, and windows that are below, I believe, six foot, six foot and below. So, again, we'd originally got a bid earlier summer, we didn't act on that because of the bond as well. We've come back and gotten new quotes. The quote we received from, let me show you that name, two-tier window film out of Garland was the quote I want to bring to you. We are going to go ahead and do that at each campus, even though in a year from now, some of these will, the doors and windows that we're about to put film on will not be here because of our construction. But that is a piece that we felt was a good, good, good spending of the safety grant money for this year. There are a couple pieces now I'll bring to you, if not relevant, money at the end of August that are at that meeting for exceptions, to explain to you some exceptions. We're going to propose TA in regard to that, that we'll need to do because of the construction to not spend several hundred thousand dollars that is going to be gone away in a year. So, but I'll bring that to you then as well. So, for the safety film, it will go, again, on entrance doors, side windows on each campus, high school, elementary, middle school, this office for entrance doors, side doors, or side windows, and in classroom windows if they're below six foot. Again, as Max shared again in our second year state, does not mean you can't shoot through those. We've got, yeah, what it does is it, it is a resistant film to where it won't shatter, and it takes longer to get through. The film that we've seen and that we've put up, you know, there's demonstration we've seen, you know, whereas a regular window, you shoot one time, you're able to go through it. This with the resistance film makes that into a minute and a half to three minutes of trying to get through one window. So, it is to slow down the progression into a building if that were to happen, you know, that's what that's for.
When can I start?
This one here is four to five weeks out, so. And they were, they're also saying they'll work around our time as well.
Okay. And then I guess once we, like, we'll do this building, but once they, we'll have that on the new glass, too.
Correct, correct, yeah. The new construction will have to meet standard when it goes in, yeah.
Okay, need a motion that we approve vendor to install a safety film. The district vendor would be two-tier.
And that cost, let me throw you that cost real quick, that is at a cost of thirty, thirty thousand... Sorry, let me pull that up real quick. Thirty thousand five ninety-five forty. That's on page four, if you're looking in your book. Thirty thousand five ninety-five and forty cents.
How much safety money did we get?
Two hundred thousand. So, through that, part of that safety grant, part of what we did through that, part of the requirements are, we have to have numbering of doors, above doors. We're working on that right now. What's called knock boxes, that, did I say that right? Knox boxes. What those are, they'll be outside, ma'am?
It's your boxes.
Yeah, and so what those boxes are, those are mounted boxes outside main entrances that are accessible to first responders. Those have to be there. Again, fencing, film, and doors, and panic alert button. Another part that says that, what'll be on Monday night's agenda that we didn't have ready for today, but something else we've been working all summer with is we were required to have silent panic alert buttons. So, what we, we're going to do, because we have so many teachers that are not just stationary in one room, and we want everybody to have access to it, is we have, the first company we were looking at pretty much made a person static, even if they weren't there. If they were able to use their button, it would still appear that they're in the classroom, in that one classroom. We found a product that is, I'll present to you Monday night, that is, it's kind of like I've, those I fall on and I can't get up buttons, what it is. It will be, I think, the same size as our badges are, so it'll go with that. It is a group called Sentajix. And so, my example of what happens, I shared yours there, our safety... And so my example of what happens, I shared yesterday our safety meetings yesterday, is so if I'm a sixth grade teacher and I'm in class and I've got a couple of kids that decide they're going to get in a tussle and I need help, then I push my buttons three times and that notifies principal, assistant principal, Max, whoever else that we set up in the system notify, and it shows, pull up our phone, have an interactive map shows me where that person is or where I need to go to. So what also comes with it is strobe lights that they're going to mount throughout our district as well. So now I'm a same teacher, but I'm not in the classroom, I'm out on the playground with kids after lunch or whatever, and I notice a car pull up and somebody steps out of the car that's going to create harm for our district. Well, now instead of three times, I'm constantly pushing that, so I don't have to remember a number, I'm just pushing, and it automatically dials nine-one-one, it automatically dials Max, us, strobe light goes off. So it is, it's the immediate notification of lockdown and provides immediate alert of what's taking place. And so it'll be something that's on everybody, a part of what they already have, and the other pieces that come with that. Jen and I sent through a couple demonstrations of it in meetings with it, and we're pretty excited about what it's going for. So that'll come Monday night.
Several schools in Texas are also utilizing it, so it's.
So we'll have that Monday night, that first year of that will come out of safety grant, year two and three will come out of budget, but the initial part will be set up, and then year two and three will just be the fee for it. So what we'll do is we'll have it for every employee, and we'll have extras, of course, as they get broke or whatever, we'll have some extras that come with it, we also are providing it, we'll have it for every sub.
But we've heard there, we have a sub badge system just like this for when a sub comes in and signs in, they get their system for the day. So that way, every person in our, working with kids is able to alert if they need it.
So it's live, and it's, I think it's going to be a great addition to our safety plan of what we've got. So I'll share, I have more of that Monday night, but that's kind of just what it is. That's another piece of the safety grant we'll see as well.
Who'll be in charge of charging these things and, you know, getting them?
They don't charge.
They don't charge, they haven't.
I'm talking about charging them to the teacher, getting them. Who'll be in charge of, like, Max, do you do the key cards?
No, we've changed that over.
HR.
Okay.
So it'll actually be, part of it will be the upload. So if we have a new employee, as part of our onboarding with me, Esmeralda and Melody, we add names into all of our systems, which is kind of what I want to take that off of Max at onboarding. We just thought, okay, that's a general flow, here's your key card, here's your, to kind of clean up everything you get as a new employee, here's your laptop, here's your key card, here's your badge. And so that goes through. So this actually, this system actually works with our personnel payroll system, so it's actually a nightly import. So the first big, what I call the import into the system will be something that we send up in a file. So here's all of our staff, but what, one of the things that we like that Dr. McCullough mentioned is it's not sensitive to your campus, whereas a lot of the panic buttons we were looking at, I had to sign it like Kyle Clayton is at the middle school. So it's a signing, it thinks he's at the middle school. Well, as you know, Carly Hunt moves campus to campus with theater. So the beauty of the new system that we were looking at is it hits on those access points and hubs. And the other thing is the company actually, kind of like your security systems, they monitor at their company level, so they're also watching that. The badges themselves have a life, so you don't, again, that was the beauty of it. You don't have to charge it, you don't have to worry about a teacher plugging it in, somebody's is dead. It actually stays in real time with those gateway hubs. So again, trying to think, one more thing, we don't want the teacher to have to worry about the sustainability of keeping it, and does it work for our coaches that are moving around, subs that are moving, our custodial staff and maintenance that are moving around so that it's truly alerting at point of contact.
Another piece of it is the, is the, how instant it is when there's an emergency. Right now, we have what's called the Raptor system through our phone, we have an app that you could go in. But, so we're trying to even take a cellphone out of the, out of the process of an emergency so that when there's an actual emergency going on, majority of us, through stress and everything else, react a little differently, sometimes we'll, I mean, just calls us do so, forget things, or, you know, we just panicked a little bit. So we're in that regard right there, hopefully the car is going to move those things, you're not having to swipe or log in or, you know, it updated last night, so now I've got to type in my new, you know, I've got to re-log in and everything, but it's ready to go and will be a time saver, we hope.
And another, again, talking about legislation, and the beauty of legislation where one bill contradicts another one. So last spring, when the school's safety standards came out, the commissioner's rule came out, and we're looking at all of the definitions and everything, then we go through legislative session, and then we have Senate Bill eight fifty-eight that says, oh, we're sorry, you can't use mobile devices for your panic alert system. Oh, we're sorry, it has to be a district-owned item. Oh, it has to be a hard one. So it was like, we have a lot of schools right now that went with a mobile system that doesn't comply with Senate Bill eight fifty-eight. So then you're like, okay, everybody had to punt, but they'd already spent money out of your school's safety money, and it doesn't need legislative bill. And so that's what we're kind of running into as school districts, is we, they kind of put us on this trajectory, and then it's like, wait, sorry, that doesn't actually meet, you have to go this way. So trying to kind of stay current with everything that the state is doing in school safety and have it compatible. But that's your question, I'm sorry, we totally veered off. Your question is it actually, as soon as Melody puts that employee in that night, it imports in, so we give them the hard copy and now they're in. So that will work in real time. So like I said, other than that initial installation, which that company does come onsite and do full installation, so that will not be anything that's a burden to technology or to Max. So the goal of that was to allow Max to actually be law enforcement, to actually be, you know, a lot of what we're finding is, as you know, Max will do anything for us. And so it was like, oh, well, we'll give him that, give him that, and so trying to streamline that process so he truly is focused on that school safety aspect and that visibility as a district.
Okay.
This sounds like more work, but it's more efficient for the district and it flows a lot better for us.
That's what I was wondering, is if it's taken you a day a week to do some of this stuff?
Oh, we all summer.
It probably goes pretty fast.
All summer, we'll be like, hey, Max, we got a new employee, hey, Max, we got a, and so, I mean, that was what we were kind of finding. And we're like, well, where are we already doing this? Well, we're already, we're already issuing keys, we're already issuing a computer, and if we're already getting that from the exit process, why are we not just saying, hi, here's your lane, here's your badge, you're in that? So we trained Esmeralda, Julia, Drennan is also trained, so we've got a backup person, technology is trained. So there's actually five of us in district right now that can tag in if there's an issue, so. Hopefully, hopefully that helps.
Yes.
So remember, it's the film we started with.
I'll make a motion to approve the safety film for the district.
Second.
Second by Linda. Josh makes a motion, second by Linda. Any further questions? All four. Five oh. Any further business?
Two awake, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you very much.